So, good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting to order the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. Start with a roll call of members. So Chip Martel Bell.
Here.
Jim McBane.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Michael Feely.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And I am here, Chairman Dave Hadfield. Tom Lucy's excused. Amy Walls excused. They both have personal situations this evening and it won't, actually Amy could potentially join us, I think, after 10 o'clock, but I'm really hoping we're done by then tonight. And we could be, but anyway, let's see how it goes. So that's for attendance, so let's proceed then into the legal notice. Chip, if you please.
Insistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. Posted. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, 1-301-715-8592, Meeting ID 98500691585, passcode 930418. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer at 781-246-6308, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant you your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for you. Tonight's meeting, one, continued hearings. Two, 22-46, 22-47, Doug Hart, Hart's Hardware, application for a special permit under Article 16, Sectional 190-99E, Table 1 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, to allow two projecting bracket signs. Application for variances under Article 16, Section 190-99E, Table 1 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, to allow for bracket signs, wall signs, and window signs. The property is shown as map 18, lot parcels 221-001 of the assessor's maps, and is located at 442-446 Main Street. Case 2248, 2249, and 2250, Lydia Secone, application for a special permit under Article 4, Section 190-22A1F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow an accessory use within the dwelling application for a variance under Article 4, Section 190-22A1F2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, seeking relief of the minimum lot width requirements. Application for a variance under Article 4, Section 190-22A1F6 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing the required 25% of the habitable area to be greater. This property is shown as map 14C, lot parcels 149-LA6 of the assessor's maps, and is located 21 Mansfield Drive. Case number 22-51, High Mountain LLC, application for special permits under Articles 4, 7, 8, and Sections 190-23, 190-36C, 190-45 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, seeking a special permit and site plan approval to allow for warehouse use and to allow reduction in requirements and/or standards for off-street parking and loading. The property is shown as map 22, lot parcels 46 and 47A of the assessor's map, and is located at 910 Main Street. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Chip. Okay, a couple administrative matters we'll take up front. From attorney Brian McGrail, dated April 13th, applicant CCF Quanapower Property LLC, a 200 to 400 Quanapower Parkway, requesting that we continue the matter to the meeting on our April 27th to allow time for the completion of materials requested by the Board of Appeals and for a full quorum to be present.
So move for the continuation of this matter to our next hearing, which I believe is the 23rd? 27th? Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim? Jim? You're on mute.
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so if anyone's here for 200 Quanapower, we'll hear that again at our next hearing. We also received correspondence on April 12th from Derek Kopeck and David Michael Johnson, Studio 26 Architects, for the property of 259 Vernon Street, requesting a continuance for their case to our next meeting on April 27th to allow time to provide additional materials requested by the board and the town.
I move that we continue this to April 27th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? All right, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So if anyone's here for 259 Vernon, that is also scheduled for our next hearing. Okay, so now we have one more. We're going to take up one continued hearing and then a new hearing in order just to maybe make things a little easier and save some time. They have the same representation. They anticipated to perhaps both be relatively quick, and then we'll move on to the regularly scheduled agenda and the rest of the order. So with that, the next continued hearing, 22-35, William G. Caton and Phyllis L. Caton at 6 Windship Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing William and Phyllis Caton, Caton at 6 Windship Drive in Wakefield. I believe they're logged on somewhere here tonight. They're out of state, but they were going to try to log on. To refresh the board's memory, this is, the subject matter of this case is derived from an enforcement order that was issued by the building inspector in December of 2021 regarding an illegal, referred to it as an illegal unit or resident in the property. My clients have two kitchens in their property, which is very common in that area up in Windship Drive, and it had been reported to the building inspector that my clients were renting the lower level to somebody. I believe a neighbor or an offender had filed a complaint, which prompted the building inspector's enforcement order. It was retained by the Catons on this matter. It was their understanding that they were allowed to have a tenant, a non-relative, who was living there. That was their truthful understanding, and they had rented that space to a neighbor's child, who's an adult, to live there. I went through the bylaw with them in detail and explained that that is not allowed. It's a single-residence zoning district. And they, and after spending some time with me, they understood that. I met with the building inspector and explained that it was not our goal to, to, I guess, heavily oppose his enforcement order more than shepherd compliance with his enforcement order. So with that said, what, what happened at that point is the Catons worked out an agreement with that tenant to get out within a period of time, because as you know, with COVID rules, et cetera, when you have, once you have a tenant, that's not an easy accomplishment. And they were able to do that. The tenant vacated the property yesterday and has moved out, so the, that unit is vacant. And what the building inspector had requested was he wants to inspect the property, which we're happy to do. My clients are coming back from Florida in mid-May, and the building inspector just went on vacation also, so, so we're going to follow up with that and, and let Ben into the house as he's requested, so we can inspect to make sure, but the moving trucks were there yesterday, I'm told by some of the neighbors, so I believe that, I was told, and actually, my clients had a neighbor go in to the house to confirm that it had been vacated. So what I would respectfully request is to continue this until, I would say, the second meeting in May. I would propose to extend the board's time to render a decision on this until the end of June. I currently have extended it till the end of May, and I think I'll report back at that second meeting in May that this matter is fully resolved and we would withdraw our appeal at that time. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, board members?
Oh.
No. I move that we continue this to the second meeting in May.
Which should be May 25th.
I second that.
Mr. Chair, not if there's any public that want to be here.
Well, based on the testimony provided, perhaps that could be. Okay, so yeah, we'll open up the public. Thanks for the reminder. If there's any member of the public who wishes to comment or have a, have a question on what's been just presented, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I'll call on you at this time.
Nope, she's on mute. I think, I think Ms. Napolion is trying to speak, but she's on mute.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. I didn't even know I was muted. Anyway, I'm the one who filed the complaint. We've been here six years. I live across the street from the Catons and I was very upset because when we moved here, the Catons actually told us, even though we had a kitchen, and we've never had a house like this before, and we moved here for, A, it's zoned as a single-family homes. Lot of children have moved in here, and the Catons are actually the ones who told us, just because you have a kitchen and a bathroom, we have a handicap bathroom downstairs, and a big room where someone could sleep, you're not allowed to rent out the downstairs. Not that we want to, because we don't. We like our privacy. So they informed me of this, and, and they were kind of nasty about it, and so I thought, when I saw, I know the people, the daughter who moved over there, she had moved out of her house in November and moved in there in December, and I was like, wow. And I did see the moving truck yesterday, so I was very pleased, and I'm pleased that they, they understand the law, because I did look it up with the Town of Wakefield, because my own, one of my other concerns was, because there's so many little kids around here, if everybody was able to rent, then there'd be more traffic, there'd be less parking, because not everybody has like a two-car garage and enough room for a lot of cars, and if they rent to younger people, we don't know what's going to happen, and people are paying, especially where the mansion house used to be, $1.5 million over here, $1.325. They're paying big bucks to live here, and to have a two-family like that, there, there's a section of Wakefield, they're all two families, and they're lovely. So if I, like, say, I wanted a two-family house, I'd buy a two-family house. I used to have a two-family house in Newton, and I don't want to be in Leannewood anymore. But anyway, I appreciate the board looking into this. Brian, I appreciate your giving the information, and, and I'm very pleased. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh.
Okay. See no other hands or anyone waving in their pictures. I'll close with the public testimony.
So back to the board. Chairman, I move to continue this to the second meeting in May, May 25th.
I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to continue? All right, Chip?
Yes.
Jim? Joe?
Yeah.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so now we need a related motion to extend the time to render a decision to June 30th. Brian requested.
I propose, I propose extending the time. Wasn't it May 20? Wasn't it May?
I didn't know we had to do that. Sorry, I just thought.
Yeah, it's a separate, separate motion, separate vote. Yeah. So who's doing it?
He can, Jim can.
I make the, I make the motion that we extend this to May 25th?
No, Jim, Jim, we just talked.
All right, so I gave him his chance, he failed. I move that we, I move that we extend the timetable to, to do this till the end of June?
June 30th.
June 30th, right?
Potentially after our second meeting in June, if it, if it took that long to.
If it took that long to, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's.
Could I just ask one quick question? When, when you say extend it to the next meeting or June or May, whatever it is, is that to make the final decision, or is that for the building inspector to come and inspect their house?
Did you listen to Mr. McGrail's testimony? He said they eventually, this application for the aggrieved party is eventually going to be withdrawn, once the matter is resolved with the building inspector. This is, this is simply a paperwork matter to continue this on our agenda for public notice.
Oh, okay.
To our May hearing. It's going to ultimately likely get withdrawn without prejudice, and the matter's going to be resolved as discussed.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, motion made, and Joe, did you second that?
I did second it.
Yep, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So again, it's on our agenda for May 25th. We will see where things stand at that time. Thank you for the updates, Brian. Thank you. So now we're going to continue with another matter that Brian is the representation for. 22-51, it's a new hearing, High Mountain LLC at 910 Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant, High Mountain LLC. Property is 910 Main Street. Would be tonight is Gilbert Sang, who is one of the ownership members of the Limited Liability Company and manager, and John Ogden from Hayes Engineering. I think this is a fairly straightforward matter. This property has been before your board at least two times in the past 20 years. It is the property in Greenwood, which is, was the old Melrose Paint Building, and then it was recently permitted, I think in 2015, where it became a warehouse for a home improvement company. And so I think the board is somewhat familiar with this. We're here, we're here tonight, and we're seeking a couple of special permits. One is to allow warehouse wholesale use on the property, which requires a special permit in the business district, which is a special permit now that would be the third time that you granted, because the other two had that component to it. And also, a special permit to, for reduction in the requirements of parking and loading, which again, has been granted previously for this project. You also have a history of granting signed variances for this project. We're not required, requesting any signage at this point. That's something that we're going to table. Gilbert will deal with that. He has a property under agreement to purchase, subject to getting approvals from the town to operate a related business of his, which is called MemT, M-E-M-T, T-E-A, the drink. And Gilbert has, I think, a pretty unique business plan. He, his, his company, MemT, which will occupy the property, they are a, they import tea leaves, full-size tea leaves, and they package them and they sell them. They sell them wholesale to restaurants quite a bit, and they also do a little bit of retail. They don't actually make the drink and sell the drink, they just sell the leaves. It's becoming very popular. These are not like tea bags that you would buy at the supermarket. These are the, the full-size tea leaves. And what the plan would be, would be to, you know, warehouse them there, bring them in. It would have a small packaging component, which is allowed. I'll get into some of the detail on that, the bylaw, which is allowed, and a small retail. So Gilbert actually wants to open a small retail store as part of this, would also have an office use component, so the, the mix would be warehouse wholesale, a little bit of, I use the term manufacturing, preparation. It would have a little retail component, which we'll show you, and then it would have offices too. The retail component is pretty interesting. His company already has a retail store in Davis Square in Cambridge, where consumers can come in and buy the tea leaves, because they're becoming pretty popular, and he wants to open that in Wakefield, so Wakefield residents could go in and buy, purchase full-size tea leaves. And I'm going to kind of show you, if I could share the screen. And Gil, I'm going to maybe let you talk a little bit about it for the board. Let me just, let me just bring this up first. Second. There you go. So this is just kind of the website. They, as I mentioned, they have a retail component in East Cambridge, is it Gil?
It's right on Davis Square, so the Somerville-Cambridge border actually goes through our store.
Yeah, so you want to tell the board a little bit about, elaborate, if I didn't hit everything on what you do, so they will.
No, you did a pretty good job. We, you know, we source, we go to origin, we source tea, loose-leaf teas, we import them, we bring it in. We are the dominant market player in the Boston area. We work with a lot of our hospitality accounts, so a lot of cafes, restaurants, other tea companies, hotels. We have probably about 800 clients within the Boston area. You've probably had, if you're a tea drinker, you probably have had our teas at one of the restaurants, so we're a little bit on the higher-end side. And your product in terms of what that beverage is, whole-leaf loose-leaf tea, as Brian said, and we're not really a supermarket, cut and sift, smaller tea bag-sized things. We're, we're kind of the next level up. If you want, if you drink coffee, we're kind of on that same level of third-wave coffee with blue bottles and some towns of those drinks. And we're just looking to expand. We've been in business for over, the brand has been around since 1999. I acquired the company in 2009, and we had moved the company to Watertown, to a 7,500-square-foot facility, and I just needed more space. Over the last five years, I actually acquired another rental unit for another 4,400 square-foot space, but we need growth, and I need a headquarters, and I think this particular space is perfect for it. It's got a little bit of everything for us, and I think it really hits nail on the head for us.
Joe, can you maybe tell the board what the, you know, consumers would maybe experience in the retail component?
Sure. I'm, I'm viewing this as kind of a, an opportunity for folks to kind of come in and take a look at the leaves and smell the tea, so they'll be able to visually take a look at it. We'll have teas on display, not for consumption, but for purchase to brew at home. They'll be able to see it, they'll be able to touch it if they want to, and they'll be able to smell it. We'll have sniffer jars and other things, so we want to educate the folks of what loose-leaf tea is, and basically, that's what we do at our store here in Davis Square. We actually educate folks. We used to have a lot of classes before COVID. Every week, we would have at least two or three different classes, and during the year, those classes would change depending on what would be available in the, during the season. So, you know, right now, we would be going to first flush, first pickings, first growth of the season. Towards the end of the year, we'd be doing different things like chai and stuff like that, so we're really just trying to educate folks on what tea is, and I think this particular space could do that. However, that's on the cards for right now, not until COVID. It's a little bit more handled, and we feel comfortable having more people come in elbow-to-elbow or shoulder-to-shoulder, and then we could have more classes of some sort.
Great, thank you, Gil. So hopefully that gives the board an idea of what, you know, what the plan is to show you, elaborate on the site, and John and I can probably do this together. I'm sure it's, the site will be familiar to some of you. The site plan really hasn't changed since the last time you saw it. Okay, can you see the plan now? So there's no, there's no, there's no, this is, in the upper-left-hand corner of the plan, we really delineate the, the square footages and how, how it's going to operate, and that's how the parking table is generated. So what the plan is, on the, on the first floor, this is the parking lot area, so to orient you, the building kind of is like two pieces and connected here, so here's all the parking field. So this is the first floor. Back is mainly going to be warehouse, there's a loading dock here. This, this is where the retail would be, 950 square feet, perfect spot for it. Nice entry, more warehouse here, and a little bit of a preparation area in the back corner, just 260 square feet. On the second floor, there's going to be offices upstairs, another preparation area, 348 square feet, and more warehouse. Again, when I talked about the impacts of shipping, he anticipates he can control his shipments, that there'd be like a box-type truck that would come once a week for delivery, for deliveries of his teas, and all of his shipping either is by a small van that's owned by the company or via UPS trucks. So there's not like a heavy trucking impact that would take place here. The, what, what the bylaw provides in the business district, that manufacturing or preparation is allowed if, if the product is sold on the premises, which is happening here, but it cannot be more than 25% of the total area. Total square footage inside is about 16,000, so that would allow 4,000 square feet of preparation area. We're not even close. We're, we're under 1,000. So we meet that requirement. There's also a requirement that you cannot have more than five employees that would be designated for that preparation or manufacturing. We anticipate that that could be a condition, and that is not a problem. It will be probably two or three that will be doing the, and the, and the preparation of manufacturing really is just taking the bulk tea leaves and packaging them either display and sale on the retail wood or to some of the other end-users. As far as the parking goes, we're not proposing to change anything on the parking. This is the parking field. John went out there, and there's a note here, I think that's important for the board to see, that the painted parking spaces shown have been seal-coated over. They need to be restripped. You can see through the, you can barely see through it, but you can see where they are. So we would certainly entertain a condition, and Gil wants to do it anyways. They have to be restripped. But this parking field is exactly the way it's been for all of, all of the uses that have taken place out there over the past 20 years. As far as the parking requirements, John prepared a, a table, and this just kind of breaks down the square footage for the various uses. And the total would be required 35, provided 17. This is more than enough for what Gil's doing, and, and this is very consistent with the relief that your board has given in the past for this property. I think the current use needed 30, and it was reduced down to 17 back in 2015. So, and there's also handicap parking for the folks that would be utilizing the retail area. So I think this is a really good use. It's, it's a pretty significant property in Greenwood. It's really the only, one of the only, I mean, Hallmark Health is another, but really, the only property that has some good parking to go with it. A lot of the properties, as is typical in either downtown Wakefield or downtown Greenwood, is not really parking fields. This actually gets them off-street, so, and I think it's kind of exciting that this building, which is in the Greenwood downtown area, will now have kind of a unique retail component, which it hasn't had for a number of years. It was really just kind of a contractors' building. It's a very inviting building, a warm building. I think it will be a great place and something unique for the town to experience. So, so what we're requesting, as I mentioned, a special permit for the use, and also for the relief. Um, and also uh for the relief for uh parking and loading. Happy to answer your questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm more concerned about the parking and the overall parking. A couple of questions. How many employees, office staff, uh, and retail people? Cash register people, whomever, do you think are going to be here on a daily basis?
I have a staff above seven at this uh, our current warehouse location. So. I, you know, I, I'm not gonna say that we're not looking to grow, but I think our growth is more mechanized in a way. So it's, we get, we have a lot of um, we can add a lot of revenue without adding a lot of folks, a lot of headcount. And of course, I want to keep headcount down, but I have a lot of folks who are actually non-drivers. And so the fact that we're right across from the Greenwood Station is one of the draws for this particular uh location. Uh, got a couple of inner city uh folks who would be traveling in from Roxbury and Dorchester. Um, they don't have cars. They'll be uh jumping on the commuter rail.
I, I guess my concern was I kept hearing that this would be a great opportunity for expansion and growth. And that usually means more cars, more traffic. I, I'm just concerned that. At some point you outgrow the parking. Cause we would never want to have your employees start taking up spaces on the street. And I don't think you'd want that if you have a little bit of a. Retail exposure as well.
No, of course.
How do we minimize? How do we make sure that doesn't happen, Brian? Is it by conditioning it for the future that if, if you do end up starting to have more than. The parking spaces allowed? I, I don't know. That's my concern is that if we. You know, the past, the past was like three people and a truck was coming in and out. I felt real comfortable with that. I just don't know how we make sure that we, that, you know. Tea leaves explode and all of a sudden now we've got thirty people trying to park in seventeen spaces.
Right. Um, I. I, even as optimistic as I am, I can't see that being the case. Uh, I, I mean. To be realistic, I think um, this particular space is not. Even though it's kind of in the town center, it's not really a walking area, so to speak. So I think people are going to come out to us or people who know about teas and whatever it might be that attracts them to us, you know. So I envision this kind of more like a um. You know, a roaster kind of um commissary type thing where you could come in and buy things, but it has to be like large quantities. You know, because um, we're not different from my Davis Square uh location, which we have smaller packets. Two ounce, four ounce and all that type of stuff. We do all our retail online fulfillment through Davis Square. This is actually just our bulk. So whoever comes through the store, they would have to buy it at the larger quantity. To get the, you know, better discount if you want to call it that. Um, but in terms of growth on the. Fulfillment, not the full uh, the ware- warehouse side. The name of the game is really mechanization. So part of what I want to do is turn some of that space perhaps to potentially getting more. Um, equipment instead of having someone who's hand packing certain things right now, which is laborious. To be able to bring in a machine that can do most of that type of stuff. And right now I can't do that or I don't want to do it because uh, if I don't own the space, uh, there's no reason for me to make that investment into. Equipment that's going to cost, you know, a pretty penny.
I mean, is that satisfying, Mr. Tabell, or do we need to? Okay, so how about if, how about if I um?
First of all, I'm disappointed that we can't go get small packages.
Well, I think you will. I mean, you'll make stuff like that available in the retail, Gil.
Well, he just said he wasn't going to, but that's only Davis Square.
It will have.
That this is more commissary and big stuff.
What we have is actually, we fulfill for other, we, we sell to a lot of grocery markets. So we do have grocery market, small packages that are different than some of our stuff that we'd have at Davis Square. So the Davis Square, we used to sell it by the ounce. So back then, people would be able to come in and try. They could taste teas. We would brew them up and then they could taste and sample everything on site. And then make a decision as what they want to buy. And so it would be done in bulk, but it would be packed up. Per ounce. So if someone wanted three ounces, they could get three ounces of this tea. If they wanted two ounces of that tea, they could do that too. What we do have is, actually, I don't know if I have the packet here. We have small grocery products that we're going to have available, but that's going to be a line of about forty-five teas. That they can try and buy. So those are going to be available, but that's not the full line of everything that we offer. Um, because part of what we have is online stuff that it can only be bought in smaller quantities. And that's going to be only available at Davis Square.
I think what we could do, Mr. Tabell, we could, you know, we would entertain a condition that no employees can park on the street.
Oh yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Didn't we, didn't we say?
We end up with seventeen employees. That makes no space for retail customers driving in.
Yeah, but nobody, who else in Greenwood has a place for retail customers to pull it off the street? Nobody.
Let me ask a question, Brian. Didn't you say there was?
I, I take that back, Chip.
Be careful.
That's Greenwood Plaza does.
Yeah, right. A large parking area.
Didn't, Brian, didn't you say that the, the limit was five employees?
On the, on the preparation area, Jim.
Yeah, so then the question is, you know, the uh, the preparation area looks like it's about three quarters of the area. The rest of it's just office, right?
Manufacturing and shipping.
Preparation area is very small. Um, hold on, Jim, let me show it to you. It's, it's, it's only comprised of.
Okay, yeah, the retail.
Two hundred and sixty square feet on the first floor and three hundred and forty-eight. Square feet on the second floor.
But the rest is warehouse space to grow into. So, I mean, I don't think it will be an issue. I just want to make sure it doesn't become an issue.
Sure. Understood.
Cause, cause Brian is right. I mean, other than Greenwood Plaza, there's no, you know, all the other strips, everybody parks on the street and they. Tuck their cars out back with dumpsters and everything else, so.
So the other, so the other employees basically become the retail in the office space primarily, basically on some baggers. So. The question is, how many employees should we make sure that basically have parking space?
Well, as it stands right now, ha- not half, but I would say three of the seven that I have. Take public transportation, they don't.
Yeah, our, our hope is that you explode.
Yeah.
Right? And, and do a whale of a business and become a. Diehard love Wakefield fan. And we don't want everybody else in Greenwood to hate you because nobody can find parking spots on the road. Because everybody's trucking in and now that could be the best case and worst case scenario. So. I just, if we can condition it somehow, Brian. I just don't know how we control it or we're, or even oversee it.
It's for you to decide, but I mean, I can tell you on the past two. Relief for parking that you gave on this property, including a major retail, which was the. Uh, paint supply and um Melrose Paint and Decorating, which was pretty popular retail place in its time. They didn't have any, they had no condition on, I think it's, it's really. To put a condition limiting employees or something like that, you're really impacting the, the value of the property, the market.
And I have no interest in doing that.
Yeah, I mean.
The only, the only interest I have is that we don't spill out onto the street.
And Chip, I mean, if they do grow that the, the, the amount they do is, I mean, one way, I guess I would think about it. Maybe Gil would could tell me if I'm wrong is. That worst case scenario, then they've outgrown the space anyways, and they're probably looking to either get more space or unfortunately move. So, you know, if they get that big, then it's almost, it'll be a problem for a short amount of time until they can find more space.
Okay, I'm.
That's, that's how I think.
Just wanted to kind of throw it out there.
That's how I think.
Greenwood and parking is a, is a real interesting subject.
All right, my kids are uh, coming in from outside. Me, I'm just moving to the office.
Just mute yourself.
No, no. I have three kids who are five.
I muted him.
Brian, Brian, what's it say, what's it say about um, snow removal in previous?
Nothing.
Decision.
They've got, they've got room in the left side of the lot. They pile it up.
Nothing.
It all goes in. There's quite, I keep pointing like somebody can see me pointing. Um, it, it goes in on the left hand side, Jim, and it just always kind of plowed it over there and. It's never closed in enough.
Well, do we want to say if there's, you know, at some point, basically a truck it?
I can, I can tell you that here's the conditions that you had on the last uh project that was here. Um, you reduced the parking from thirty to seventeen spaces in the exact same parking field. Conditions included no outdoor storage of materials on the property because that, I think because that uh, that applicant.
That was the home improvement piece.
Uh, no, I don't know why this was on here, but it was. No overnight parking on the property was a condition?
Uh, because people completely thought that it, there'd be like tons of vans there.
Okay, um, no use of the property shall be made as a contractor's yard. You probably um, didn't want.
Don't need that.
Uh, all existing signage will be removed and future signage, just any will be subject to approval of the board.
Which it didn't get.
Yeah, and no change of the exterior of the building or the site without further approval of the board. But those were the conditions that you put on.
There's a, there's a sign down there freestanding that never got approval from the design review board or. Basically never got a permit, nor did it come before this board.
Yeah, so I talked to my client about that, Jim. We're, we're happy to take a condition that that will be removed, you know, and then we're going to permit this properly for sign.
Yeah, I'd remove all signage and then get signage. Yeah, we control it and get signage reapproved. I guess I'm okay with the parking. Uh, I think to Greg's point that if it gets to be that big an issue or an issue at all. That uh, there'll be greater problems like the space constraints. Um, and like you said, Mr. McGrail, that uh. Now seventeen spaces is pretty good for this, this area. So I'm, I'm, I, I withdraw it. Cause I don't, I think anything else becomes clumsy and unenforceable. And that doesn't make any sense.
Well, Chip, to your point, um, I mean, how long, like Brian, how long would these guys be, uh, people be visiting the store? They'd be like, like ten minutes in and out?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So there, by the time that, but the by the time it fills up, people are going to be leaving. I mean, I don't see, I don't believe would be an issue.
Yeah. I'm, I, I. Having talked through it, I'm okay.
Any other subject matter comments?
I want small bags to be able to be bought.
I'm gonna go back to signage. This is an opportunity to get some scrape, some great signage on this building basically graphically. So. I'll be looking for this coming through the design review board eventually.
Perfect.
So do we want to say take down all current signage, Jim, including the freestanding sign and then come back to us?
Yeah, there is no, yeah, there's no signage on the building now, Gil, right? Yeah. Just that freestanding sign, right, Jim?
Yep.
Yeah. The, the building facade chip is clean.
I can't remember. It's been a long time since I've driven down that far.
Well, he's got an assisting business with a brand and some signage and brandings. I imagine it'll be consistent with what he's got. But yes, we would definitely look for it to be coming through the proper review. Um, we can see what's appropriate for this building because maybe with a larger. Facility, there's an opportunity for. You know, besides the freestanding, maybe something on the building. Um, yeah. So, okay, anything else?
Not for me.
Other board members?
Yeah, I guess I would just say real quick, knowing this brand, I think this is exactly, I mean, I'm not a tea guy, but having gone to some of the higher end restaurants in the city. And, and hotels and stuff, I think this is exactly the type of business that we would want to be attracted to Wakefield. I think it would be a. A great addition and a great uh, you know. Way to work with them, you know, reducing the parking, way to work with the business that could attract other businesses to the area, so.
So, thank you, Craig.
I just want to see what their softball uniform looks like.
I mean, I know, I, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, anything else? Or nothing? We'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Meeting room and I'll call on you in the order I see them. And see no hands, calls it the public testimony. So back to the board, as Mr. McGrail said, we need.
Yeah.
It's um, it's um, sorry, Brian.
Couple of special permits.
Well, yeah, as I said, normally it's parking is um. It can be done under the same one. Usually we've done parking.
I, I, that's the way it's, the reason I did that, Mr. Chair, that's the way it's historically been done with this property. Okay, yeah, that, that's why I did it. I married what uh, what um. What was done before.
Okay, so it's a site, special permit, site plan approval.
Yeah, it'll be two separate findings. Yeah, it would be two separate, I think two separate special permits. Um, but you know, would be.
So you still think we are, we, there needs to be two votes?
Yeah.
Even though there was one application.
I mean, they, they didn't do two votes before, um, but I would request two votes.
Okay. That's what I want to get to because normally this special permit site plan approval is its own vote because there's criteria for that. And then the parking and loading, uh, which again, we've got the discretion to. To alter if we think it's beneficial to the business and the neighborhood and all that, right? So usually it may have. Different findings and, you know, although the same conditions, so um, okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
I, I'm ready to do, do that. Perfect. I move that we grant a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety dash twenty-three and one ninety dash forty-five. Allowing a warehouse and wholesale use incidental to the business of the sale of tea leaves. And related products mixed with a retail component for the sale of tea leaves. And related products and accessory business production involving the manufacturing or preparation of tea leaves. And related products for sale and office use as shown on the site plan. And I think we found that the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations requiring a special permit in the district. The requested use is essential and desirable to the public convenience and welfare. That the requested use will not create an added undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. That the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewerage system or any other municipal system. For such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town. Will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety and the general welfare. And that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district and adjoining districts. And not be detrimental to the public health convenience or welfare. And the requested use will not by its addition to a neighborhood. Cause an excess of that particular use that could be determined to the character of said neighborhood. Because we don't have any other tea leave manufacturers. And to section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws, we also reviewed the section of this bylaw. Which in pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan. The Special Permit Granting Authority, us and the other applicable agencies should consider among the following things. A convenience and safety of vehicle and pedestrian movement within the site. And in relation to Ja- adjacent streets, properties and improvements. Two, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewered refuse and other waste and the methods of surface and stormwater drainage. Three, the precision provision for off street loading and unloading of vehicles. Incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related uses on the lot of tract. We've considered all of the above criteria and find it satisfied. As far as conditions go, um, the two conditions that I would maintain from. The, the previous is that all existing signage, meaning. all existing signage, meaning these freestanding sign will be, will be removed and that all new signage will be approved by the board, will hold jurisdiction. And that no change to the exterior of the building or the site without further approval of the board will be needed. Um, and all the, which is from the same conditions previously, and I don't think we need any of the conditions that were previously on the property for contractors' yard or storage of materials, because it's not applicable, so just those two, I would be comfortable with.
Um, Chip, how about staff parking on, on-site, not off-site?
Right, that there will be no staff parking on, on the streets.
We didn't.
All staff parking will be on-site.
We didn't um, talk about trash removal or trash dumpsters or anything like that?
Uh, there's no spot for them on the site, so I assume they're getting picked up or something like that, they'd have to come back to us if the site plan changes and a dumpster is added.
Yeah, they're gonna manage the material inside, the refuse inside, right, Gail?
Yeah, we'll keep a half yarder inside the dock door and then wheel it out when the guys come by and pick it up.
Yeah, just if anything becomes permanent outside, you'd have to come back to us. Because the site plan as presented has been approved and there's no call for dumpsters.
Okay, and I, and I would add one more, the parking restripping, as Brian noted, so we get that done. So that the parking spaces are clearly doing.
And that we contingent, make it continued upon also restripping of the parking lot to match the site plan.
Yep. Alright, so those four conditions, sound good, everyone? Okay. I have a second on that motion. Alright, seconded by Jim, um, voting members. Myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Greg, you wanna be on this?
Sure.
Since you spoke up and you're swan song, vote for the evening.
I'm one more, or no, no vote, I guess, but yeah, that's a good point.
Um, okay, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
No, we're not done yet.
No.
You still have to listen to me a little longer.
You didn't, you didn't read your tea leaves, we have one more vote.
I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw for any necessary reductions in requirements and/or standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw related to all of the mixed uses referenced in the just granted special permit as shown on the site plan, including get ready, A, a reduction in the number of required number of parking spaces under one ninety dash forty-one, table three of the bylaw to a total of seventeen parking spaces. Section B, section one ninety dash thirty-seven C, reducing the required size of the parking spaces to allow the parking spaces as shown on the site plan. C, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D, allowing the width of the aisles to be as shown on the site plan. D, section one ninety dash thirty-seven E, allowing the setback of off-street parking areas to be closer than seven and a half feet to the building and reducing their requirement of fifteen-foot wide line landscape step strip separating the open parking areas from the street line as shown on the site plan. C, section one ninety dash thirty-seven one, allowing the width of the driveway serving parking lot facilities to be as shown in the site plan. F, section one ninety dash thirty-eight, allowing the loading as shown on the site plan. G, any other necessary reductions in requirements and/or standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw rotated to the project as shown on the site plan. And we found that the application of standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven kind of proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of feasibility due to lack of suitable land, design considerations, and other factors as we discussed, how the business works and the number of employees it may or may not have. The granting of such special permits will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood or district or of the town with the same four conditions as previously stated.
Thank you, Chip, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that too is unanimous. Now, now.
Now, you can say, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck to you, looking forward to it.
Appreciate it.
Welcome to the town.
Coming into Wakefield, guys.
Thank you. Alright, have a good night. Alright. Brian, there were no other matters for you this evening?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, have a good night then, thank you. Alright, moving right along, our next continued hearing, or our last continued hearing on the agenda, twenty-two dash thirty-nine, zero North Ave, Wakefield LLC at five ninety-six North Ave.
Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, I'm out.
That's right, you are. You are going to timeout, Mr. Pride. He'll be in a bit, we'll text you when you can come back, yeah? Mr. Shaw?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members.
So, let me just just wanna make note of who's here, so myself, Jim, Chip, and Michael and Greg. Okay. So you do have a quorum to proceed, Jesse, just, um, you know, Joe's obviously recused.
Yeah.
And the other three members, Amy, Michael, and Gregory have missed one meeting. So, and that's part of the reason Gregory is dialed in remotely for us, because he wanted to stay on this, just, and we may need him in the end uh, as a full voting member on this one, so, um, I just wanted you to be aware so that we can proceed. I think we're still got, you know, adequate coverage of membership um, with the other members, you know, signing affidavits and catching up on the meeting they missed, and they can be, um, they can remain on as voting members potentially, so.
Thank you very much, yeah, we, we appreciate, uh, everyone who's, who's, um, who's missed one meeting or, or missing tonight, um, could apprise themselves of what's happened and, and do the affidavits, and we don't have a notice issue. Uh, just, just to, to be clear, each member can only do that once during the hearing, so if, if that happens more than once for any of the members, um, they would need to, to remove themselves as voting members, so.
Understood, and we, we do diligently keep track of that with Gail's assistance, so.
I, I know you do, hello to you, Gail, smartly keeping your camera off tonight. Uh, so if I may, Mr. Chair, if you're, if the board is, is prepared to, to go forward tonight, I'll, I'll offer just a brief presentation um, and then turn things over to Andrew and Peter from, from Phoenix Architects.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, so, uh, good evening again to, to all the members, um, just a, a brief recap from the previous hearing, we were last before you on March twenty-third. Um, and at the time, we provided a presentation regarding the architecture and design of the project, which at the time was proposed as a four-story building uh, containing thirty-eight units. Uh, we received a lot of, uh, helpful feedback from the members and members of the public. Uh, the direction that we got from the board, I believe, was that you had requested that we added a, an additional story and, and more units. And I, I'm getting a message from my architect that that's incorrect, actually. Um, the, that's a, that's a joke, I think that was you, Mr. McBane, who wanted, uh, an additional story. The, um, the feedback that we got, we thought was, was pretty clear, uh, that the building was, was too large, specifically too tall, um, so as, as you may have seen from the plans that we filed last week, um, Phoenix went back to the drawing board and came back with a revised layout for the building uh, which removed the top story, so it has been now reduced from four stories to three. The, uh, the unit count in the new building has been reduced slightly from thirty-eight to thirty-six units. Um, and the, uh, the reduction in units has also allowed us to shift the massing around within the building, which has reduced the, uh, bedroom count from fifty-nine to fifty-four, uh, bedrooms. Uh, the height of the building has also been reduced significantly from forty-nine and a half to thirty-six and a half feet. Uh, the parking count at this point has not been changed, but, uh, we'll get into that at, at a future ma- meeting, I believe, uh, once we get into the site civil issues, um, because we're, we're looking into adding additional parking and providing some guest parking. Uh, but on the current plan, we've not changed the parking count, so uh, with the reduction of units, we, uh, we have an increased ratio of parking, uh, spaces per unit, which went from, uh, one point five three on the previous design uh, to one point six one on the, on the current design. Um, one additional update to provide to the members before I go to Andrew for him to go through the updated plan. Uh, we have reached out to the traffic advisory committee uh, with respect to setting up a meeting with them, uh, in the near future. Uh, we heard back from, uh, from the committee, I believe, uh, last week or the week before, and they are looking into setting a meeting sometime later this month, we haven't got a date, uh, set yet with them. Uh, but we are looking forward to meeting with them to get their feedback, and as soon as that's available to the board, uh, we'll be sure that that's, that's submitted to you. Uh, but that, that remains an open item, as does the, the parking, uh, the parking arrangement, which we're continuing to look into. Uh, so with that all having been said, um, I'll, I'd like to turn things over to, to Andrew, unless any of the members have questions for me or any other administrative matters you'd like to discuss before we get into the, to the meat of the matter.
We'll just add that I, I heard from Lieutenant Anderson of the TAC, and he asked me, um, he mentioned that he had two potential items on his agenda, looked like he was looking at April twenty-ninth. So I don't know if it's been set or announced, certainly it's still a couple weeks away, but April twenty-ninth may have been the date he was targeting, and this was one of the items on, on the agenda, um, so I'm sure you'll confirm and line things up, but yeah, that's the only thing I would add there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse, for the introduction, and thank you to the board for letting us speak tonight. I will share my screen and we can begin. Can everyone see the front graphic now?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect, so, as Jesse had stated, our biggest goal here was reducing the height, we have reduced it uh, significantly, twelve feet from forty-eight and a half to thirty-six and a half feet. Um, the biggest, you know, change to this was that we had to work internally um, getting more unit, units within these three stories, um, without, you know, A, impacting them and, uh, B, um, making them, you know, the right proportion, right scale. Um, one big thing that you'll notice as well from the front graphic that we received last round was that the building was extremely dark, so we explored, uh, different uses of materials in this uh, rendering here, um, we're looking at like a James Hardy cement clapboard, um, which has relation to the two other buildings, uh, five ninety-eight and six hundred. And as you can see in the corner here, we have switched, uh, once again, a cement board um, that is a lighter gray compared to the previous one, which was a much darker, uh, style. Um, as you can see, we have lost all the brick and we went to a stone base around the front here. Um, and as Jesse noted, we only went, we only lost two units and made sure that the parking is the same, so. Um, one thing we tried to do is show the previous street scape graphic and the new proposed street scape graphic. So as you can see, the building height is significantly reduced, um, from the previous one. Um, as you can see, the length of the building has not changed, we have not pushed out in the back. The only adjustment made to get the unit count was in the front, and I know that from previous talks that uh, the board was interested in seeing the building kind of pulled up forward, so we did that by pulling both the left-hand side and the right-hand side out roughly nine and a half feet and twenty-two feet left to right on each side. To get the unit counts to work, we had to strateg- strategically, uh, redo the floor plans. And in this case, we were able to get four more units on the first floor compared to last time. We were showing a total of eight units before, now it's twelve units. Um, we were able to do this by one, losing the recreational space in the top right corner. And then also just dividing, um, you know, taking roughly one and a half, two feet out of each unit. Um, so the square footages of the units have slightly shrunk, but they were larger scale before. We feel that they still work and flow properly. Going upstairs, um, where was ten units on the second, third, and fourth floor, we, we're able to, on just now, the second and third floor, do twelve units, so two more units within each of these floors totaling a total of thirty-six units, whereas before we were thirty-eight. Um, as you can see, we are still, I, I'm gonna jump back to the first floor, we are still providing a mailroom, lobby area. And then go into some elevations, one thing we ended up doing is actually bringing the vestibule um, outwards in the front, just to create a, a spot for meeting, um, and also just to allow the hallway that has shrunk slightly in width to not feel so tight when you're going down. Besides that, not much has changed as far as appearance from the left and right. Does anyone have any questions? I can go back to the rendering if that helps.
Our members?
Yes, I have more of a comment, less of a question, but, you know, sorry, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I wasn't able to make these comments, but I think it was two meetings ago that, I think it was Chip had the comment, are we getting to a stage where we have sort of, uh, staple Phoenix architect-looking building in town? And my, you know, non-architect, everyday citizen mind, which is certainly more people in town than not, removing the brick gets us closer to a Phoenix architect-type building. I heard the comment about it being dark, I, I again, sorry for not being there at the time and being able to make this what it was said, but I, I thought the brick was a, a good addition to differentiate from other buildings, um. You know, this, I guess that's my biggest comment, is this is getting to, other than size, that's more of a, maybe a look comment for later down the road, uh, but that's my, that was my initial perception when I saw this.
Understood, and, uh, we, we agree in a sense, you know, there's other buildings, you know, Crescent Commons, there's a few other buildings that we have done that are completely different than what we're proposing here. And I think what we are trying to, you know, achieve here is not the same building as five ninety-eight and six hundred, but because they're all in a row, uh, we wanna keep some sort of, um, ambiance between them and some sort of connection. I think it would be very weird to go from, you know, those two other buildings, five ninety-eights and six hundred, and then completely, you know, change the style, you know, when they're right next to each other, but, um, definitely noted with the brick, um, I think, you know, the brick looked great too. Um, and this change was mostly on the feedback from last meeting.
Yeah, no, I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having it look different than the other buildings. Um, it's not one campus, uh, you know, having, I know this probably isn't a comment, people necessarily wanna hear of this, but having lived in other, you know, in the city for a while, I am used to everything not looking the same. Um, living in older neighborhoods, so it being different than the ones next to it would, would be fine and probably beneficial to, to my eye, but that's just one, one.
Okay.
No, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Greg, that I think this looks too much like row housing. You know, that we just keep marching down, and Andrew, I'm concerned that you said you heard that people wanted the building pulled forward. Um, I heard just the opposite, that we wanted the building pushed back if possible, like I know there's conservation land there, but I'm, I'm concerned we do look like row houses, that we look like we're just one after another after another, that there's no break in, in in either the depth off the road or the appearance, so I'm, I'm not sure that I heard that it was too dark. In either the depth off the road or the appearance, so I'm, I'm not sure that I heard that it was too dark. Maybe I missed that. Um, and somebody.
The word was masculine, but.
Okay, well that.
Considered as dark. I think that's a more proper word.
So I was okay, I'm, I'm okay with masculine, I guess, I, I don't know, I, I, I just. Uh, to me, I, I'm, I'm just, I, you know, you guys did such a great job at Wakefield Commons. I don't think this needs to look like the other two, uh, you know, I think it needs to stand alone, potentially. Um, uh, that's my feel. I'm also, I, I understand trying to maximize the number of units within the floors, and I certainly. Appreciate coming down a floor. I still think you're just trying to cram too much in a shoebox. You know, the, by reducing the size of the units to, to keep from thirty-eight to thirty-six and taking a whole floor off. I, I appreciate the, 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 the goal, but it still feels really tight and constrained to me. Um. But we're not really interested in the, in the interiors, but it, it just feels really tight to me, that's all.
And you had to remove, and you had to remove a potential nice amenity in a recreation space to, to try to maintain a certain number of units. Right? So that could have been a nice amenity that differentiates this building from perhaps others. Cause I don't think the other ones have it, uh, its neighbors have it, so it's, I, you know, I, others picked up on.
Neighbors have, Dave, I agree with you, the neighbors have two-thirds of the units that this one has. And a just about the same amount of square footage.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm concerned that this is a packed, condensed building. And I'm concerned it's too close to the street.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Were constrained a, a little bit, you know?
And I've reached out to the conservation agent, and I haven't heard back, and I, I, and I was away and out for a bit with surgery, so. I gotta circle back with them, because I think we need to get, get going with them, we've reached out to M H P, we're waiting for their application to come back. So that potentially we could, we could organize a subcommittee and sort of. Like we do with Crescent Commons, work some of these details, some of these design options back and forth, you know, and, and get. Conservation's input into moving this building around potentially. And to suit it best for the site and what parameters we want to work within, so. Again, rather than vetting all of that here over the number of hours and hours, um. So, and I, I didn't mention it upfront, Jesse, but yeah, we're, we're still hoping to, to pull that together, um. You know, once, once we've talked to conservation and hear from M H P, we can then talk about starting to form them and notice them and then. And take this, because again, I don't know how much farther we, we keep going on these, uh, my. And I appreciate the updates the team did, but again, I, to Jeff's point too, I. I think you heard us say we'd rather have it further back and you pulled it forward, so. I'm not sure if we're just not getting our point across, we just need to get the, the details in this subcommittee and just work, you know, roll up the sleeves and get going and. Those aspects, and we continue these until. There's really some more substantial, and you know, the look of it. I like some of the brick as well, I just, it's a lot of gray, it's just a lot of gray along one long row of apartment buildings. Um, I'd like to see some differentiation as well, but again, the point of these meetings are not necessarily to hash out every minutia detail, it's not in everyone's best interest. Um. So, is there any other board members that have other comments about what's been presented tonight?
Well, the, the interesting thing is, I, I, I'm not weighing in on one's design versus the other at the moment, which I will, of course. Interesting thing is to think about is that the other side of the street. Is, is almost a repeat of this in the sense that the buildings are all the same along that side, you've got. Three or so groups of buildings along there, they're all brick, they're all two stories, but. They're very, they're a campus, basically, as Greg said, um, along that whole side, so. I don't necessarily think we need to create this as a campus either. Um, and, and maybe you're correct in that the brick ought to be pursued a little more, it doesn't mean it has to be a brown brick or red brick or. Something else, I wouldn't want to mimic the brick across the street. Um, so we'd have to be careful about that, that basically, but I, I think this just needs to develop more. And I don't disagree on the number of units that. Uh, I was hoping that when that floor came off, that there would be many more units coming out of this thing, so that we'd have more parking. And, and less numbers, because Chip's right. The other buildings are much smaller in the number of units that they have compared with this, this is really. Not a monster as far as numbers. So, let's keep on going.
I also think the other comment, and, and by the way, I think it's great to have taken a floor off, I'm not minimizing that. That at all, but we haven't, we also talked about stepping into the neighborhood. Um, like we did at six-ten main, or like we have some other spaces, and, and I don't feel like this steps into the neighborhood at all. You know, the top floor is not pulled back at all, um, it's still. Three stories is better than four, and certainly we're not looking straight into people's backyards and, and stuff like that, so we have made some great progress, but. To Dave's point, it might be time to get that subcommittee going, so that. The real nitty-gritty is done behind the scenes and then brought to us, but not just rehashing.
Yeah, Chip, I think the, the, the quote from the last meeting when I was watching was it needs to look smaller, is probably the direction too. Than this, even though, though there is a floor removed, doesn't really look smaller, so some sort of. Architect math has to be working here.
Yep.
But we, we certainly appreciate all the feedback, I, I think a subcommittee would be helpful to iron out the, the details. Um, in terms of, of going forward, what is the, the pleasure of the, the members of this board in terms of the next hearing and what you would like to hear? Um, regarding this project, is your intent to move to site civil, or, or do you want to continue on with architecture?
To, to me, to me, part of the solution has to do with the civil and conservation, basically. Before we go too far down this road, because one of the things that can happen. Um, with this would be for the building to step back. Now, I don't mean the whole building, I mean, like, break it, basically, so that you find an appropriate location. On a party wall and push one building back like ten feet from the other one. Or something like that, so it breaks it up even more, and is more like the neighborhood, which has got. A series of buildings, basically, that they're own individual houses, so. Some way we need to make this look more like maybe individual buildings, but you all interconnected, whether that means. One break or two breaks, whether it means two components shifted or three components shifted, but we need to work that out. With both conservation issues and civil issues, basically. At least that's one direction I'd like to see pursued, if nothing else, then a trial balloon to see how it works.
I, I think that makes sense, Mr. McBane, the, obviously there, there are conservation issues for the site, given the proximity of the wetlands, and, and we know that a number of the neighbors have. Have asked questions about that at a previous hearing, so. To the extent the conservation a, agent is able to provide a letter uh, to the board with recommendations. I think that would be uh, very helpful, and, and, including attending, attending a future meeting and providing feedback. They will be, I will say, somewhat limited in the amount of advice that the commissioners themselves can give, because this project will obviously be before them. Um, and we, by statute, we're not allowed to actually file with them until after this board has already uh, issued its decision. Uh, so.
Jesse, I don't get that, why is that?
It's a, it's a matter of the state regulations, um, it, it's, it's specifically required that all local permits. Be obtained prior to filing with conservation. And this is an issue that I'm actually, I'm running into now on another project, uh, in another town where. Uh, we, we did file during the zoning board process, and uh, the conservation commission uh, declined to open the hearing on that. Uh, uh, because of the statute, um, so it's, that's just the way it is.
So, so here's the problem that I have, we're asking you to look at the site based upon. Hoping to be able to push it back or do things, and we know we're gonna either have pushback or. Have issues with ConCon. So we can approve something, let's say we push this back and say, okay. You're within fifty feet, we're gonna go within twenty-five feet, we do all these designs, we like it, and then they come back and say you can't do that.
Well, that would be.
Doesn't that seem to be a reverse thought process?
I, I certainly, I agree with you, it's uh, i- it's, it's an issue, and, and, and it certainly would make things a lot. Easier for, I think, all involved, particularly in a project like this under forty-B. That those processes could, could take place at the same time, uh, unfortunately, the regulations just, just don't allow it. Um, in terms of.
I guess I didn't realize that, sorry.
Board, if the conservation commission told us no, that we couldn't go closer to the wetlands, you know, I, just, just to remind. The members, we're not proposing any alteration of wetlands, it's a, it's an entirely a buffer zone project. So, we're not anticipating anything like that. I- i- if however, something were to occur along those lines, that would really be a prob- a problem for us. And potentially would mean that we'd have to come back uh, before this board for a project change, but. Uh, that's, that's something to be.
Right, I'm just saying, because we're asking you to think about getting this out of line and to shift some units ten feet, fifteen feet. Plus or minus and break up the front and, and do things like that, all of that has impact on the wetlands, and maybe. Through your site guy, you can say, okay, if we tweak this or tweak that, we can keep our lines correct, so I guess that's for you to look at, but.
Yeah.
And I've heard.
This seems a little backwards to me, but we are in Massachusetts.
Is it a forty-B regulation that you're saying you can't open, um?
No, no, Greg, it's.
We do that regularly.
I, I, I know, we, we do it as well, sometimes, it's, it's technically not allowed, though, and, and it's in the, the. Regulations under the Wetlands Protection Act, I can provide the site if you.
Yeah, definitely said it, because I mean.
We always go.
I've only been on the board for four years or so, and every single project that has ConCon jurisdiction. Opens before, so essentially what you're saying is that every single ConCon. Uh. Uh, decision should, would probably be void or something that, on every project.
Yeah, I, I, I recognize that, it, it's technically, it's, it's just not the way things are supposed to do, and we've done it in the past, but we've, we've started running into issues. Uh, with doing it, technically it's not allowed, I, I'll provide the site uh, in a letter to the board. Um, tomorrow, i- if that's, if that's appropriate.
I mean, because if, if that, I mean, if that's the case, then it's, it's not a, I thought when you said that before. You know, two meetings ago, it was a forty-B regulation, I mean, Dave, we might want to talk to Tom about this, because this could be every single ConCon jurisdiction project.
Yeah, which it pretty much is, I mean, I, I can't think of one we've done without running concurrently, Jeff, Greg.
Yeah, it makes. Yeah, that's.
Yep. Yep, okay.
So, my, uh, my engineer had, Chris Rogers has very helpfully texted me the, the text of the. C M R, and I, I don't see the site, but the, what it specifically says is. Uh, when an applicant for a comprehensive permit under chapter forty-B from a board of appeals has received a determination from the board granting or denying the permit. And in the case of denial, has appealed to the H A C, said applicant shall be deemed to have applied for all permits obtainable at the time of filing.
So it is forty-B specific, though, that.
It's, that's, yes, yes, it is, Greg, but that, that is.
Yeah, that's what I was.
C M Rs under the Wetlands Protection Act.
But it is, yeah, so sorry, I might, maybe my words were correct, it is forty-B project specific, though.
That, that provision, yes.
Yeah, okay, so it's not every project that's ever come before with, with.
Cor- correct, yes.
Okay, that makes my heart less. Going faster here, but still, yeah, I'd like to see the site, okay, so it's only forty-B projects, not every project.
Yeah. I'll, I'll provide that to you tomorrow in a letter.
Great, thank you. And we have received correspondence from Rebecca Davis, the conservation department. Okay, not the ConCon, it's, it's a re- representative of the department. She's, you know, sent us a letter, said that they're in the jurisdiction, there's a few pages of notes here, Jesse, have you seen this letter?
I have not, I have not seen that.
All right, well, please, please reach out to Gail if you need it, or, I don't know if Gail, if this correspondence is something we've put on the website, um, now that. Um. Oh yeah, and FYI, we got a page now for this uh, project, um, on the board of appeals website. Um, so all plans and so forth will be captured there in presentations, um. But it has several paragraphs, um, and one of which. Says the applicant's not provided enough information to determine compliance with standard three, blah, 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 so. It definitely requires some follow-up here, just with, based on the initial con- uh, conservation input. And there's also been some correspondence from one of the abutters since our last hearing from a Mr. Connolly. Who sent correspondence to Rebecca Davis, uh, our board, Gail. Um, with some, um, comments and questions, and she has responded to him. Um. Again, for the record, so, um, she's looking into some things there as well, so. There's definitely some ongoing dialogue here that. Should continue, and I think outside of the purview of a formal application with the conservation commission. But just ensuring that what's being proposed on the site. Um, that, if there are things that need to be taken into consideration. Um, for our jurisdiction, that we're doing what we need to do, right? Um, and if our plans need to be updated to show additional details related to wetlands or setbacks or streams or. What culverts, I'm seeing different words here, that the plans get updated to show that, right, so that we can see clearly what, what else is going on. Everything that's going on on the site, how it ties into the lake and abutting properties and all that. So, um. So that was new correspondence, so Jesse, I would definitely, um, if you need copies or, you know, the public record, Gail will have these, um, tomorrow. Um.
Thank you, I, I will reach out to Gail to, to get copies of those, and in the meantime, before we, we meet next, um. We'll meet as a team and, and, and try to arrange a, a time so we can set up uh, with, with Rebecca Davis and. Um, perhaps town engineer to discuss those, those issues with, through respect to the compliance with the stormwater standards. Um, obviously a, a very important issue, um. You, you know, it, to, to the extent the, the board would feel that it would be, um, of. Of assistance to you, it, it is within your purview to, to obtain outside peer review, uh, consultants to, to review that for you and to provide. Uh, guidance, so that you're, you're not, as it were, taking our word for it, um, that, just a, just a suggestion, if, if that's something the, the members would find helpful, that.
Yep.
Be useful to get, get through that technical process particularly.
Yep. I'm all gonna actively pursue getting this, uh, the, the information we need to get, um, you know, a subcommittee going. Um, you know, but the wheels are in motion, but it's just, you know, now we're at the whim of getting. Um, something from M H P, and I'll, I'll reach out to. Um, Rebecca Davis again, and, and if necessary, Tom Mullin, our town council, just to ensure. If we were to put together a subcommittee, could we work with Ms. Davis? In her capacity as a conservation agent, right, not necessarily on the conservation commission. To deliberate and discuss some details, you know, in those, in those, what, what would be public hearings, um, of those subcommittees. Um, because it, it's clear that there's some, some factors here to, to be brought to light, and. Uh, again, plans might need to be adj- adjusted accordingly, so I'll be working that as well, so, go- going forward though, I would say. Do we continue for two weeks and kind of just see where we are, and if we're just, not, nothing to report or the committees coming together, we just, again, continue it? You want to go for two weeks, just to keep? Keep you on the agenda?
I, I think that would be, that would be appropriate, um, the, the next meeting, is that the twenty-seventh, or is that, are we kicking into, uh? May?
Twenty-seventh of April, yeah.
Okay. I'm just.
And we, Mr. Chairman, I would say we've given them enough feedback. From Mr. McBane talking about breaking up the facade, from us talking about. Not having it be aligned with the other two buildings that we've given the architects and, and, and their team. Without forming our special enough to do in two weeks to give us a little bit of insight of. What they might be thinking based on, on our comments today.
Okay. So you're keeping for two weeks and see if they've come up with some.
Yeah, or they may say, you know, until we get some of these other questions answered. Let's, let's hold off, but that would be their choice.
I, I, let me add something else, and that is that I just pulled up the book and looked at the civil engineering. There is quite a distance, um, this, unlike the other two buildings. Does not have a retaining wall at the back, so it slopes down to the wetlands. And if there was some sort of retaining wall similar to the rest, closer to where the wetlands start. By the graphics basically on this, is this a possibility of, of stepping the parking in the back? Along with the building in the front, basically pushing it back in that sort of stepped motion. Also, helpfully, if, if some of the units, basically more units came out. Instead of basically expanding within the footprint that's there, is go back to. Instead of basically expanding within the footprint that's there, is go back to what maybe the plan was originally. And lose more units, it will give you more parking. Space out back at the same time, so I'm just hinting that there might there get outside the box and think about. Uh what was done on the other projects. To give them enough parking space, which is not being what's done here. In that there are no retaining walls, it's a slope banking basically. So that's an all option, basically, when they start looking at how they might. Um set this building into three segments or two segments. To make something more aesthetically appropriate to the area.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to know the box that we're dealing with when. Designing this in general, I mean, we're pushing up, we're pulling back. Um I think a lot of that's the conversation with Concom. And whatever you come back with and whatever your conversations are with them. The other thing is, I I enjoyed the um the brick, and I enjoyed the uh. Kind of the darker cornices and the the that made it look entirely different than those other buildings, because. Those are, those are cookie cutter, to say the least, as far as design goes.
But the thing, I think the thing, Mike, is. Um I understand where you're all coming from, but you're looking in the wrong direction at the same time. Is when we look at that streetscape with all the buildings sort of a light color. If you look to the other side, short of the brick buildings. The whole housing development. Along that whole street, particularly across the street. Are all very light colors. So on one hand, you're saying, we're saying basically them, make it different. On the other hand, we want to make it more neighborly. So by doing brick, basically, the only. The only buildings that are brick. Are the office buildings whereby everything else down the street going towards town. Are whites and yellows and other sorts of things. And they're light colored and they're all clapboard, so. You know, is that the right direction? And this will take some time to start out, but I just want to point that out to everybody, basically. Is there's more than one direction to look when you start to deal with this, and if you want to make it more. Um something that fits into the neighborhood. But that's all in the eyes of the holder, of course.
I guess the comment would be make it look different, but let the subcommittee then figure it out.
Alright, anything else, board members for tonight? Or Jesse from the team?
I don't believe there's anything else from us tonight, uh we appreciate all the the candid feedback and and the port to getting into the. The nitty gritty and a and a subcommittee in the future. For the next hearing in in two weeks, um. Ideally, we we would hope to have some some updates for you with respect to the the TAC meeting, perhaps that will have happened by then. Um and then and then where we're going and potentially with MHP, so I think we can make good use of the time and this. This being the third hearing and and only the second month since the hearing opened, I think. We're making good progress uh towards towards moving forward, so we appreciate all your your comments tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I ask one for the thing. I would like to get a civil plan. Um electronically, if they if they could send it to me. Or us.
Do we not have that?
No, I don't have it, I just looked at my stuff.
I I am sorry, I spoke over you, Ms. Ms. Urbain, we we did submit a civil plan electronically, but I'll make sure that you get a a copy. Uh as soon as we get off the meeting tonight.
Alright, and let's get it on the website, again, all plans, um.
That I believe should be on there already, um and and if it's not, I'll 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 make sure that gets there.
Okay, yeah, I was just starting to look there, I was gonna go there quickly, but. Yeah, if it was in the initial binder that you gave, all of those presentations should be in there, Jim.
No, I've got it in the binder, I just don't have electronic one.
Jim, all of the contents of the binder have been put on the website.
Okay, alright.
Please, please go take a look at the website. Maybe do it. Okay, and but we'll get an electronic copy if we we need something else that we don't already have. But everything that was in the paper binder should be on the website, an electronic.
If you'd like Mr. McBane, I can I can go on share screen and show you exactly where it is for.
I can find it, thank you.
Alright, uh with that, I'm gonna open up the public testimony at this time, if anyone has a comment or question about the information we've heard tonight. Please raise your hand, I'll call on you again, we're not gonna talk about traffic, we're not gonna talk about. Anything that we have not talked about tonight. Okay, um but if you want to talk about what the information was tonight, we'll entertain that now. Uh we also have received some written correspondence, I don't know if that that person is here, we'll see, uh but we'll take that up if they are not. We got something from email, so the first name I saw pop up is Lindsay. If you want to come off mute and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Connolly, two Fielding Street. I I appreciate other comments, the reducing the building, um I had a couple thoughts and ideas specifically and only to design. Would I be able to show a couple pictures and share my screen?
Sure.
It's from what I emailed earlier. So keep it real brief, because we kind of hit a lot of points that I was talking about.
Oh, God.
Am I good to go? Yep, go ahead, Jim, mute yourself.
So from this look. I know we gotta build the property up four or five feet for drainage, and then with the thirty six and a half feet. We're still gonna be at. The top of the telephone pole, and if you look at the top of the telephone pole. In comparison to my house. It's still unbelievably overwhelming. I had a suggestion, I sent this to Dana Lopez last year. Uh this is eight ninety-four Main Street, which is right next to the property that the previous. Person just talked about. I feel like these would be absolutely acceptable, however ma- many they need to fit, sloped roof, looks like a house. And just have a bunch of units in there. Uh so simply, I think, a mix between this design. On that lot would make a lot of sense. That's all I have for design for today.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that. Jen. Leepole.
Hi, Jen Leepole, twenty-one Fielding Street. I just had a question in regards to the new. Proposal that was there, so on the last time, there was uh Juliet. Uh balconies, I guess, they took off some of the balconies, and I know since it is moved forward, it looked as though. Were those balconies on each end now also put back for the third floor? So that they're they're out more over the street again?
There's one balcony on each side up there. But once again, we tried to, you know, use a nano wall, partition wall to raise it up and not just be exposed railings, so. But yes, we were proposing one on each side where the bump out is. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you, which is concerning that we're going backwards again.
They were on there last time, too.
They were on there last time, too, because it looks like they were.
Yep, in the top corner, right up here.
I I don't see. There's no screen share, sorry.
Oh, let me try to share real quick. As you can see up in here, there's one on each side.
All those were, I didn't realize those are balconies, okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? No, Jen's all set, thank you, anyone else? Can I say no hands, we'll close the public testimony for the evening.
I move that we continue this to our April twenty-seventh meeting.
Actually, Jeff, Jeff, sorry, there was, as I said, I, nobody else spoke up, but we did receive other correspondents, I just want to note it for the record. From Kenny Marshall, it was after our last hearing. Um it's in the record. Residents at five sixty-seven North Ave. And had some input concerns on groundwater, water table, wetlands, structure size. Uh landscaping, sidewalks, drainage, unforeseen damage, so again. Lot of potential aspects that we haven't even gotten to yet, but certainly starting with wetlands and structure size is kind of where we are. But Jesse, again, I would just get a copy of these. Again, for your team's consideration and and for, again, the subcommittee as we move forward. Um there's a lot of details here. For for the team to consider. Um I didn't know if they were gonna join tonight, maybe represent. That, but I just wanted to know for the record that we did receive it. Uh Mr. Marshall, and uh it's in the public file. So thank you, back to you, Chip.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, we'll we'll take a look at that and and get a copy from Gail, uh if I if I may, before you close. Uh just through you, Mr. Chair. By way of of just brief response to the gentleman who spoke a a moment ago, I believe Mr. Connolly was his name. Uh just to point out that the the revised plans that we showed tonight have been reduced in height to, I I. I believe it was thirty-six and a half feet from forty-nine and a half feet, so the the graphic that the gentleman presented. I believe it showed the building height of of that at at forty-eight and a half feet, so so I would just encourage him to to go back and. And take a look at the revised plans, which should be on the website, and um you'll see that the the height of the building has been reduced significantly. Uh so but we we do appreciate him putting that together and and we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
I uh. Can I respond to that?
Um well, we're full of public testimony, I probably should have stopped it for Jesse, but. Wh- what's the response, what are we?
I am, I made that graph this morning, I appreciate the lowering the floor. But after they have to do the four or five feet of fill, we're still at top of telephone pole height, that was my only point.
Okay, and we got that. I think Jesse got it, too, so. Alright. Chip, over to you.
I move that we continue this to April twenty-seventh here.
I'm a second. Thank you. Um any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? So we're continued, uh thanks for the updates tonight, and um we'll be in touch, Jesse, again, if there's progress I can report on the things I'm looking to look at and. Um we'll we'll see where we are in a couple of weeks.
Very good, thank you very much, and I will do the same, uh with updates on on our end, uh appreciate your time, good night, everybody.
I think it is, I'm just letting Joe back in, so we.
I'm back.
Welcome back, Joe, and uh Greg, thanks for hanging in with us, enjoy the rest of your trip. Alright, alright, take care.
Hanging in there, Dave.
Hanging in there. Casey turning off my video so I can. Get up and walk around, let have people watch me do that. I can't sit still very long. Okay, now we're ready to move on to new hearings, we have two uh left on the agenda. First one is twenty-two dash forty-six and forty-seven, Doug Hart at Hart's Hardware, four forty-two to four forty-six Main Street. And I see Hearts, I don't know who that is, but maybe it's.
Hello, Tom Galvin here. With L Y F Architects. If I can share my screen.
The wrong meeting.
No, it's right for me. So Tom Galvin with L Y F Architects, representing Hart's Hardware, um I have Tina and Doug Hart on the line with me. Um Hearts has been in the town for over forty years at this location. Um they're at the corner of Water and Main Street. Um the existing facade of the building has seen better days, uh so we've been working with the Hearts in order to update the facade. Um the existing building, just to look at some of our graphics, this is two dimensionally showing a mishmash of old signs that have been on the facade of the building. Infill areas where they have stuck over finishes where the brick used to be. Um the Ace Hardware logo and uh Hart's uh signage, uh two older metal sign bandings, this is all on Water Street. Um additionally, some of the windows had been infilled, um which we will be bringing back in the project. Um then also on Main Street, you have a corner entrance at the corner of Water and Main. And the existing facade on Main Street has. An existing metal sign, and then a new tenant space, um the tenant space is um. I think the green spot. Um so that's that one tenant area, they are not part of this sign proposal, um there will be a separate submittal for their signage. So on our facade, what we're looking to do is the brick in the upper portion of the building has. Gone a lot of weather and disrepair, um a lot of this system is failing, so the veneer is actually separating from the backup wall. So what we're looking to do is remove everything above the head of the windows. Um and install a new each sign banding to have a continuous appearance across the building. So one thing we're trying to do is bring the chevrons into the new proposed elevations. So again, this is Water Street, their main entrance to the hardware store. Um we're looking to have a major feature here above the entry door, so you know where it is. Uh adding another Chevron at the corner of Main and Water Street, and then on Main Street adding a similar Chevron. Now, on the original building, these were above each one of the window finishes, the. Pulasters that exist here actually extended up with the ball finny all at the top, and they would have a Chevron between each one of them. For this project, we are looking to emphasize entry doors and sign areas. So with that, um we felt the proportions of the sign area that we have. So in the larger area, we have um the Ace Hardware logo and then Hart's Hardware as the owner of the property. So these sign areas exceed the bylaws, so the relief that we're seeking from this. Um for the main signs, one over the entry to the um hardware store and the other one. On the Main Street side. Um above the major storefront area. And then also, we would like to add a sign at the corner of Main and Water Street. This being a focal point coming from West Water Street, coming down Main Street. Um gives the awareness to traffic um where Hearts is. So with that, the square footage that we're allowed for, our one main sign is fifteen square feet. With the height of the lettering that we're using for Hart's Hardware, and then the logo. Um we're actually using a sixteen inch letter to have the right proportions for the sign to fill the sign area that we're creating. Um so we're actually exceeding the fourteen inches and the Ace Hardware logo becomes sixteen inches. Um so an additional two inches to the height of the lettering. Uh in that, we do not exceed three foot height of the sign area. But with the sign lettering, if you take the rectangle of that, we end up at about thirty-two square feet, so we do exceed that fifteen square foot minimum. Um at the corner sign of Main and Water, um we are at twelve square feet, twelve point five square feet. And then for the Main Street, um we have, I believe it's twenty-one square feet. Um for this sign area. So with that. Uh we are exceeding um the fifteen square feet allowed and also the number of signs, but because of the. Length of the frontage of the building, we have a hundred and two linear feet on the Water Street elevation. Eight linear feet on the corner, and then another forty linear feet on Main Street. Um we're hoping that we can get relief for adding the additional signs to these areas. Um just to keep the visibility that they have with their existing signage, even though it's weathered at this point. Um and another feature that we're looking to add in this project is um. The bracket signs, so at the entry points. Both at um the Water Street elevation, we would like to have a bracket sign, which is to the right of the main entry. Mounted into the pulster. And then also at the um alongside the major storefront area, we would like to add another bracket sign. To give visibility to pedestrians walking on the sidewalk, coming up Main Street, and then also coming from Water Street. Um we feel this is a benefit for the visibility of the store. Um to have these bracket signs. For lighting, we are using cutoff shades for illuminating these sign areas. Uh and then for the bracket signs, we use. Uh, and then for the bracket signs, we're using pin lighting. Um, I have some light fixtures on that. So, this is running slow. Um, so, we've, we met with the sign, uh, committee to review all these, um, signage. Uh, they wrote their review to the building department, and that's where our denial for permitting these signs as they are. And this is where we're seeking relief from the Z B A. Uh, additionally, we, you can see window graphics where our new window systems are on the left end of the building, and then also the existing windows. This is meant to advertise the services that they have for paints, uh, keys. Everything of that nature would be in these window graphics, which are a mile-hour film, which will be applied to the windows. And that's my presentation. If there are any questions?
Let me. Thank you. Yeah, I know, Jim, you're gonna weigh in on behalf of the D R B, so, um, um, do you wanna go first, and then if anyone else has any comments, we can all add to them, but please go ahead.
So, um, Tom, you wanna leave that up? Whoops.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yep, coming back.
Want to finish that up, 'cause nobody saw it.
Which, the lights?
Uh, if you want, but let's go with the signs. Give me the, give me, um, the two sides with all the stuff on it.
Yep.
So, I've had a number of meetings with Doug, Tina, and, and Tom, basically, on this project sometime back when they were talking about, um, what they were gonna do, um, on a bigger scope. And we talked about what to do about what they could and couldn't do about signage. And as Tom's already indicated, basically, you know, even though this is a big building, the regulations say fifteen square feet. No matter how big your building is, it could be a Kmart, it would still be fifteen square feet. Um, so, the board basically has figured out a, a dynamic way to figure out what the size of the signs can be for a larger building, which quite frankly will be in future regulations, basically, that hopefully, after we get past all this COVID mess, we can finish that new package up. So, we use that as an example, basically, as to what could happen here. And the board members all agreed that what's proposed here is, is appropriate. And the sizes of the signs and the like are appropriate for the location shown on here. The aggregate area per face of building basically is, meets the required, the current requirements. And the only thing that, the only other things, basically, is there's only one um, bracket sign that's allowed, and of course, you have to have a special permit to even do nine square feet. But since they've got two faces, we, we also say it seems appropriate that they can have, basically, bracket signs on both faces, both Water Street and Main Street. The, what you see before you, um, with the strip, um, with the strips along the bottom, basically, which has, it's basically just a product thing, like, like, uh, Tom says, from hammers to, to keys, to whatever the services are they have, because behind those windows will be product being shown, which is not part of signage, it's part of product being shown on display. Um, that's the only window that ends up basically over ten percent. Everyone else on the windows, um, on the display windows meets the ten percent. So, they're asking, basically, that, um, that they'll be allowed, I think it's around twelve percent or something like that, at that particular location, that the signs can be bigger, as noted above. Um, and that brackets, there'd be two sets of bracket signs can both being nine square feet, meet the requirement, and they'd be on two sides of the building. So, that's the simple part of it, basically. And, um, the board very much supports what's being asked from Hearts. Any questions?
No big sense for me.
No, I would just say, Jim, that, that, that this is what the design review board is supposed to do, take a difficult project. First of all, I commend Hearts for finally wanting to do something. I've lived in the town for thirty years and have been waiting for this moment, so, uh, thank you for that. Secondly, you know, this is exactly what the design review board should be and should do, and, and I think for us to deliberate a whole lot more doesn't put the value of, uh, what they do. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, if they're in favor, uh, we should grant all the variances and special permits that are deemed necessary uh, to get this done and as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Chip, and I would echo all of your comments. Um, feel the same way. Happy to see this come before us, and, uh, yeah, much much desired improvement to that whole facade, so, great. Um, great to see. Um, we have received correspondence from other, on town board, just for the record. There's one comment from the town, uh, town engineer, just, you know, when potentially construction begins about fees and clearance on the sidewalk when you're doing the signs, because obviously it's a very active area. Um, from the fire chief, no, no objections, con con, not on your jurisdiction. And of course, we have the D R B's memo with all the details that were reviewed, as mentioned earlier. Um, we'll open up the public testimony moment, I just wanna make sure all, all of the board members have weighed in, want to. Anyone else have a comment or question?
Um, yeah, Dave, real quick, um, Jim, does the, the, the lettering on the glass, is that all, that's all legit? Like, that just seems like, to me, it just seems a lot of lettering on the glass, but that all meets the requirement?
Yes. Yeah. It's just, it, the first, um, set of windows, um, that, Tom, can you bring up the whole elevation on Water Street?
I mean, it looks nice. Everything matches with the red and stuff like that, just, I mean, Ace Hardware Store, to me, it already tells you that they do keys, they sell lawn, they sell tools, I mean, and then if you're gonna have it displayed in the window, I don't know, this, to me, less is more, I guess, but, I mean.
This is to me, to me, and to the board, basically, this is very appropriate. That, yeah, I mean, maybe, you know, it's obvious, but at the same time, I think it breaks down the overall uh, glass area, gives it a sort of a sweeping line through the building and all that, so it's, it's more than just signage. It, it basically plays against the rest of the building. If you look at where the reds are, basically, on this thing, it's really part of the building design. But instead of just having a red stripe, it basically takes the opportunity to, to highlight the product that's within.
Okay, yeah, no, it just, it just, to me, it was like, it seemed like a lot, a little excessive, but if, I mean, again, like Chip says, if you're okay with that, you've already discussed it. You know, I'm not.
If, if you wanna see excessive, go down there and look at it now.
No, I know, I mean, it's a hundred times, it's a hundred times better than.
Oh, absolutely.
I drive by three times a day. I live on the other side of the way, so I have, I drive by it every time I go to the gym, so. Um, is there, uh, I guess one more question. Is there any plans to update the rest of the corner where the liquor store is and further down? Or is that, is that even in the future, or is this just?
That's, that's, that's somebody else's property and somebody else's problem.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it, that's, yeah, that was, that was my only comment.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um, so if there's any member of the public who we should ask a question, make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom call. We'll entertain that at this time. Okay, so, you know, we'll close with the public testimony. Um, so, um, Tom and team, just wanna point out again, as you've, you may have heard upfront, if you were here, we're a little bit shorthanded tonight. Uh, we're down three members at this point, so we have five full voting members, um, myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and, um, Michael Feely. And Jim typically does not vote when his D R B has made a recommendation to the board. He tends to recuse his vote to somebody else, uh, 'cause he's already weighed in, so it gives somebody else on the board an opportunity to vote as, as a member of the Z B A, whereas Jim has done all the work with the D R B. So, that would mean potentially, if we follow that, that standard or that rule that we've been doing, that gives you four, four voting members. And where you need, um, variances require a super majority, you basically would need all four of the members to, to vote in your favor, to grant the relief. If one person were to not vote in favor, uh, your variance would be denied, and you'd have to wait two years to come back. I'm just stating that upfront. I haven't heard any comments or concerns from people on the call that would suggest that they're not gonna vote yes. I just, in terms of full disclosure, I just wanted to make you aware. If you had any concerns about moving forward with us, um, voting tonight, you would have the option of requesting a continuance. And additional members would be available next time. They would review this meeting minutes, the plans, they would get caught up, and you would have the full five voting members, um, should you feel you need it. Or you could proceed as with the, with the four that we would have tonight. Um, I just wanted to make you aware, so, so with that, do you have any thoughts or concerns, uh, which way you'd like to proceed before we were to proceed?
Um, I don't think there's a concern. I don't know if Doug or Tina wants to chime in, um, I think.
I have no concerns. I think that would be fine. I have no concerns.
Okay. Just full disclosure, I didn't, like I said, I haven't heard anything.
Appreciate it.
Just, someone's not feeling in favor of this, but I just wanted to make sure, um, in, in case, um, something did unexpectedly happen.
Sure.
And, and then you said, well, what the heck, you know, why, why don't you tell us upfront? We could have continued. Um, so, it's happened occasionally in the past, and we do make people available and, uh, uh, aware. And occasionally, somebody has requested to continue, just to make sure they've got the full vote, five votes, so, that's all. All right. So, with that, um, so we would be, uh, then proceeding to a vote with four voting members, myself, Jim, uh, Chip, Joe, and Mike. Someone in that.
Dave, I, did I miss that there was no public participation?
I did. I put it out there, nobody raised their hand.
Okay, that, I missed that piece, okay.
Yep.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I will try to, there's a lot of pieces to this. So, I'll try to pull it together as best as possible. And fortunately, I have the design review boards specs, so as long as Jim did his job right, I'll do my job right. Um, first of all, all decisions and special permits and variances will be uh, based on the package given to us tonight, dated. Tom, wanna help me on where the date is on this?
Uh, March fifth.
March fifth. From the architects as presented this evening. All right, um, Jim, if you don't mind just listening, and if I screw up something, feel free to tell me.
Hey.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that we start with talking about the projected bracket signs.
Right, 'cause that's a separate vote from the other, the variance on the other ones, correct?
Correct. This is special permits.
Correct.
Um, well, there's a special permit and a variance, so, we'll start with that we grant a special permit for the proposed bracket signs as required by table one, one ninety dash ninety-nine E. That is my first proposal.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the motion on the projected bracket signs? All right, um, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous, and it passes.
I recommend, I recommend that we, uh, allow a variance or grant a variance from table one, one ninety dash ninety-one E to allow two bracket signs, one on Water Street and one on Main Street, as depicted in the plan.
I second that.
Any discussion on that motion?
Do you want to add the date for the plan, Chip? The, the, the plan is different than, than the memo dated?
No, it's all the, based on the plans.
Okay, well, that.
Everything is based on the plans as presented.
So, under discussion too, I'm looking at the original application. So, Jim, they need a special permit for any bracketed sign, but to get two, they need a permit, or it would be considered by this board?
They need a variance to allow for two.
Yeah, under the table, under table one, it only allows one. It doesn't say, you know, it, it's, it's an odd situation, basically. Uh, because it only allows one, so to me, it's a variance to, to allow two.
Okay.
To just have a bracket sign, which you've already approved, that takes a special permit.
Right, okay. Just wanna double check. Um, all right, so any other discussion on that motion? Allow two bracket signs. All right, same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
So, the next will be, we'll go to wall signs, and we'll talk about Water Street elevation and the Main Street elevation. So, on the Water Street elevation, I move that we grant a variance from table one in section one ninety dash ninety-nine E to allow that the Water Street wall sign to be twenty-nine-point-two-five square feet, and that the letter be sixteen inches in height.
Second that?
No, no.
Oh, sorry.
We don't have to do these one at a time, do we? I thought we were gonna vary all of the window, all of the windows. Do we? I don't think we have to have a variance for every single variant.
I think you do. Because every one is a different square footage. I mean, I can do that we grant variances for all the window signs. I mean, David, it's only another four variances.
I know. I don't wanna write four decisions if we don't have to. Um, we've, we've varied requirements of multiple signs on a given property with one decision. Typically, one vote. We end up taking four votes.
So, I can do, so I can do a variance for each of the areas for the signage, and it can be under one vote?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it can. I've done, we've done these before, so, yes, I.
Okay, so I move that we grant a variance for the wall sign on the Water Street elevation from table one, section one ninety dash ninety-nine E to allow that sign to be twenty-nine-point-two-five square feet, and the letters be sixteen inches in height. Also, on the Main Street elevation, the sign to be twenty-one-point-six-five square feet, and the letters to be sixteen inches in height as well as the second wall sign on the Main Street wall.
Okay.
To becau-, to allow for a second sign.
Correct.
And on the strips and the strip window signs from table one ninety dash ninety-nine E that there is one unit that exceeds ten percent of the windows, and it's eleven percent. So, those are all the rest of the variance for all the rest of the signs, window strip on all elevations.
That, that one unit actually is made up of three windows.
Yeah.
I mean, four windows, I'm sorry.
Okay. There's actually an item, the Main and Water Street elevation, um, that third wall sign on the corner section, right?
Yep.
Do you see that chip in the memo? Item four. It's not in italics, but it's a recommended variance right there. Water, Main and Water Street elevation.
But we also allow, on the Main and Water Street elevation, the corner Main and Water, that the sign exceed.
No, just, it just allows for an extra sign.
Allows an extra sign.
Doesn't exceed.
That is not greater than the fifteen square feet.
Yep. Okay.
There you go.
Right, second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion with the collection of?
We have two votes, one for the, one, we had one vote for the
Special permit.
Special permit, and one vote for all the variances.
Well, we voted on having the second bracket sign under a variance, but again, we'll, we'll figure it out in the decisions, but we already voted on that, but now we're just all the relief on the signage, basically.
Yeah.
Signage. Um, okay. Any other discussion? All right, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Yeah, Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that two is unanimous. So, you have your requisite permit and variances.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to the upgrades. Very, very. Yeah.
Yep. Still look good. Well, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye. You know.
Okay. Okay. All right, the last hearing on our agenda. Twenty two dash forty eight, forty nine and fifty, Lydia Chaconi, twenty one Mansfield Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Tim Doyle on behalf of the petitioner, Lydia Chaconi. Uh my address is twenty six Main Street in Lynnfield. Um, this matter was before you under a separate petition on March ninth is case number twenty two forty. Uh at that meeting, the board identified a deficiency in the petition uh in regard to the lot with requirement and the fact that we needed the variance. Um, because we uh were not in compliance with the law with requirement. Um, so what I, there was some confusion on what the next filing date was. At that time, we thought we wouldn't be able to get back in into the board until the end of April. Whoever, when I subsequently checked the uh the website, the following morning, we realized we had additional time to file to get on for this evening. Um so this evening you have before you a petition for a special permit for an accessory use apartment. A petition for a variance for the lot with requirements. And a petition um for a variance in regard to. The size of the accessory apartment because it is going to exceed uh twenty five percent of the existing living area. Um in regard to that last variance request that was not um a hundred percent clear. If that was a right that was given to the board or whether that required a variance, that's why I submitted that uh that third petition.
Okay.
I don't think it hurts to have a variance for that.
So if you'd like me to walk the board through the plans, how how would you like me to proceed? Would you like to start with the variance?
We did that already, didn't we?
Yeah, but if you just want to run through them quickly in light of each of these requests of relief, just make sure we're clear, because these are new hearings. Um, so if you just want to bring up a copy of the plan. Sure, and just reference the applicable uh new application as is the required relief that you're seeking now. Uh we'll just make sure we're all on the same page before we go further. And as Chip said, we have seen it mostly before, so you can be somewhat. Brief, but just so we're on the same page.
As Dave's. Handling his nurse knee surgery well, but we need to get him out of here tonight.
Right, um so thi- this is in regard in regard to the variance of the lot with requirement. Right out of the gate, um in the zoning district, you have to have a lot width of a hundred of a hundred feet. We're at a hundred feet uh point four eight inches, I believe. You see that the the lot narrows immediately from. Um, you know, from this easterly sideline going straight back. Um, so through the house, uh really at the beginning of the house, we're ninety one point six feet. On lot width and at the rear of the house, we're at seventy nine point eight feet. Um, so that that's. Um, the request of the lot with requirement in terms of of the layout of the lot. Um, I did pull the subdivision plan uh for this neighborhood. And uh you'll see, I you should have the subdivision plan on your screen right now.
Yeah.
Um, the highlighted in yellow is the lot that uh of my client. Um, you can see a lot of the lots are, you know, relatively consistent, relatively squared, don't have much angle to them. With the exception of of my client's lot. And the adjacent uh in the adjacent lot, both of which. Uh have the requisite frontage at the front of the lot, but they do narrow as they go back. Uh a couple other spots in the neighborhood. So um in terms of the variance, um we would identify lot shape as as the reason that the board. Uh could give us, could grant us the variance under um chapter forty A. Any questions on that? Uh the next I'll pull up are the architect's plans. Um, just to orientate the board here. On the architect to do the calculations for us, on the existing living areas, twenty one thousand forty eight square feet.
Hopefully twenty one hundred, Mr. Doyle. Otherwise, it's got the biggest house ever, tw- twenty one thousand square feet.
Let's say I apologize, twenty one thousand four. Yeah. Um. And uh twenty five percent of that would be five hundred and thirty seven square feet. And the proposed apartment uh right now is six hundred and eighty three uh square feet. Uh this property is um a split level. Um dwelling. Um, so what we're looking to do, this is the existing basement area, and this is the area that we would propose to turn into the apartment. Um for my clients. And so this is the existing floor plan in the basement. Um, this is the upper floor, which we're not going to touch and is not part of this petition. And then this would be the final product, um with the apartment with the addition of. A kitchen area, uh some movement between the bathroom and the laundry area. Um, the bedroom and the living room. Any questions from the board?
But I think we're good, Dave. The other one is just to allow the apartment, the accessory use.
Right, I just want to go back through the criteria again, make sure we're.
Yeah. I mean, from what I see, we're not offering the exterior one bit. It's all fitting within the existing footprint. I think it meets all the criteria.
I I could walk, I have that spelled out. If I could walk the board through that if they'd like me to. So um we are seeking, as I said, uh a variance for a lot with requirement. My client, the petitioner is the owner of the property in the in the petition, in my client intends to occupy the property, so it will be. Um for her use. Um, the proposed apartment is it is within the existing principal dwelling. Uh as the board noted, there would be no expansion or enlargement of the property to accommodate uh the apartment. Um, the apartment size, we did go over, we're going to exceed that twenty five percent.
Yeah, I did the calc. If I did it right, it's about thirty two, a little under thirty two percent just for the board members, yeah.
Yeah, I think it just happens to be okay based on the split level nature of the building and how it's set up.
Right, right, right. Um. And other than that, there'd be all the customary bonding requirements and all the other. Stipulations that are under that.
So we actually, I don't know if you've done one with us before, we actually don't make you bond it. We make you write a letter on a yearly basis of who's living there and. We tried not to make it too crazy. Um, Dave has the, when he, he'll give you the, or you can ask Gail for the verbiage. But it's basically just a letter stating who's living there on a yearly basis, so that we have a record of it. Dave, am I right in that?
You are. And I've got samples when we. If we proceed to approve and generate a decision, I've got examples from prior.
You know, um, I got a silly question. There's um, there's a side setback coming to play at all because of twelve point three. Is that considered under the?
We're not changing the, we're not changing anything.
No, I mean.
So it's allowed as long as it's in the existing building.
Yep, no finding or anything?
No. Okay. Any other comments, questions on the request of relief, the permit for the accessory and the requisite variances? And relief required for them? Okay. We'll open up the public testimony. Anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand and we'll entertain that at this time. Seeing no hands and very few other people left at this point, um we'll call it the public testimony. We did receive correspondence from the town engineer. The fire chief and the conservation agents citing no objections to the project as presented in the plans that they got. As part of this application, just for the record, so you know that. Um, so with this board again, um. On this one, you have the benefit, if you were on the last one and heard me say that, you've got the benefit of five. Forty members, um for which would be required for the variance, three of which for the special permit. Um, but assuming everyone's ready to proceed to a vote, uh Chair would entertain a motion.
Dave, I think we should do the variances first, because without the variances, we can't make it an accessory apartment, right?
Agreed. Yes, thank you.
All right, so. Let me get all my dots and eyes and whatnot crossed. So under. I move that we grant a variance under article four, section one ninety dash twenty two A one F two. To allow an accessory apartment uh lot with be uh. Less than the required hundreds, hundred square feet based on. The plan presented to us by Hayes and site plan presented to us by Hayes Engineering dated December twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim. Come off mute, Jim.
Yes.
Thank you, Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's unanimous.
I move that we grant a variance under article four, section.
Freeze.
Uh oh. Chip, we lost you. Oh, Chip. He was doing so well, too.
It must be restart.
Yeah, we'll give it a moment.
What do I do?
Restart.
Looks like he's on his way back.
I'm on my phone.
Great, thank you, Chip. So we lost you right at the start of that other.
Frozen, frozen.
Yeah.
All right, so based upon the plans as presented this evening, I move that we grant a variance. That the apartment size will exceed twenty five percent of the dw- habitable dwelling area.
Second that.
Joe, any discussion on that? Okay, same voting membership.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's unanimous.
I move that we grant a special permit under article four, section one ninety dash twenty two A one F to allow. The. Home to be to allow an accessory apartment at. Twenty one Mansfield Drive, Wakefield, Mass.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, uh same voting membership.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So thank you um for repairing, reapplying, and I think we've we've done what needs to be done. Uh to properly grant the relief um and the permit required, so. Um, best of luck to you and the client. And uh, thanks for your patience tonight.
Okay, I um I believe um. I probably need to attend the next hearing to withdraw that. That previous petition.
Sure, briefly, and that's something we could take up front.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate.
So just work with Gail, we'll get on the on the agenda as I continue hearing them. It's one of those things we'd probably take right up front and just administratively.
I appreciate, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we can work offline on the decision itself. If you have drafted many decisions you want to draft, and I can do it too. It's either way, however, we can work offline and. Work through Gail.
Yep.
To get our, you know, uh contact info, but we can work on that offline and get it going.
Yep. Yeah, I'm used to doing it, so I'll I'll take a stab at it and.
All right.
You can tweet it up.
All right, thank you. We'll look for.
Thank you again.
Have a good bye. All right, um we had one item under other matters this evening, but it's my understanding. The plans were not ready, um one thirteen Water Street and Aroma Therapy Shop. They wanted to review some proposed signage. Apparently, the plans aren't ready and they requested we put them on the next agenda. Um, any other matters this evening not contemplated?
Um, just um, um, Tarrant Lane. Um, everybody's got my review of the building set basically for permit. Um, as I understand it, Dave, I guess you're in conversation with Ben when he comes back from vacation.
Yep.
As to how to proceed.
Yep.
But there are um, i- in in overall aspect, I think the problem is more the civil. Not so much the landscape, and there have been some architectural changes. Um, the landscape as in my comments basically is more because of stuff in shade. But um so, but I still think I highly recommend that they come back and make a full presentation to us. As to what they've changed.
That is the plan. Once Ben is back, I'll follow up with him. I think though, we know, is also having separate discussions just on drainage, because they don't have a building permit, right? But they've got drainage, and so he's seen some anomalies going on, obviously, that you're aware of, so. He can work that in parallel, right? But I'll work with Benny when he gets back and.
Yeah.
We'll get with, we'll get with their representation if if Jesse's still part of that or not. And we'll get them back on our future agenda to go through all the details and make them aware that we want a full accounting of everything that's changed from what we approved. Or what they potentially would like to change and a rationale for doing that um from what we approved, so. Um and we'll get into the details at that time, but yeah, um good, good to note for the record that. Tarrant Lane is is looking like it's coming back for some comment and review.
And the only other, the only other thing I would ask is Gail to pull out the list of. Of um accessory apartments, because we seem to be getting a flock of them lately. And I don't know where we are with people getting back to us, um you know, a year later. So we ought to do an inventory on that, too.
Okay.
Give Gail something else to do, because she's got so much spare time.
Like what are you thinking?
A lot of people do give me yearly letters. But uh, the older ones, I mean, I don't know how they'll ever be enforced, but that's for another day.
Yeah. We may not even know who they are.
Right.
But if they apply to us and there's a record of it, we approve something and we don't have a letter from them. I thought we went through this before. We looked at the letter that we had before, and I thought we updated the form letter and that we send out like, hey, this still exists, you're required to. You know, yeah, the stuff that never applied to us, who knows? But if they apply to us, we granted a permit. Um, I I I thought we had a running list of those, Gail, right?
Oh, I keep a the total list, but the.
Right.
Houses get sold, there's new owners, people die. There's no, it's almost impossible to go back to, you know, years. Houses get sold, there's new owners, people die. There's no, it's almost impossible to go back to, you know, years, ten years and go after people and then what? Make them pull out a kitchen and. Put it on Ben's list.
Put it on Ben's list. Pass the buck through the doorway. Yeah, okay.
Take the whole kitchen down, just the stove.
Just the walls.
Yeah. All right, any other comments, projects, updates? Okay. On your minister proof from March twenty third. I'm sorry, Chip, I missed it.
I said, on your behalf, I move that we adjourn.
Well, first, let's improve some minutes from not March twenty thirty.
All right, I move that we approve the minutes from.
Um, the twenty third, uh, March twenty third.
March twenty third as written.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on favorite chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right.
Now I move.
Thank you so much.
Be good, Dave.
All right, thanks, everyone. We are German. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. This meeting has ended.